Issues in your district. Get them on your home turf. That's what Valley businesses did recently when they hosted the 8th Annual Mayor's Luncheon. Here's Anna Marcos with more.
Once a year, the mayor has some personal FaceTime with Valley merchants and business leaders. This is the 8th Annual Mayor's Luncheon. Here, Mayor Antonio Villarogosa addresses the Valley's United Chamber of Commerce and the city issues that impact Valley businesses.
I've learned a lot from the people of the San Fernando Valley. I learned that this city needs to chart a course that is abrasive of all of us, that makes sure that everybody's getting their fair share, that really makes government more efficient, and makes it respond to the needs of the people.
That may be nowhere more true than in the Valley, which tried but failed to secede from the city of LA in 2002.
And I was part of the Valley secession movement years ago. And the whole idea was to get elected officials out here from downtown, to make sure we brought the mayor in on a regular basis.
Valley business and civic leaders say the mayor's yearly visit gives merchants the feeling the city is listening.
This inspires the business community. This looks at what are we going to do to help spark business?
The mayor touched on schools and crime, and city efforts to bring back business and create jobs. For example, city leaders have done away with grocery receipts tax on new car sales to bring back car dealers.
At one time, we had 150 car dealers here in the Valley. We're down to 50. And we want to bring them back.
He gave so much inspiration to all the people, and it looks like he's very positive and confident that the future of Los Angeles, even though he's leaving that post...
The bottle of private-label wine provided a parting gift. After eight straight years of attending, this will be the last mayoral luncheon with Valley businesses, at least for this mayor. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The luncheon took place at the Warner Center Marriott in Woodland Hills. City leaders join the South Asian community in celebrating the Festival of Lights. Meanwhile, another culture commemorates the Day of the Dead with artistic altars and honoring the city's makeup artists who work in the entertainment industry. These stories and more in City Beat. LA City Council Chambers was alive with music and dance as choreographer and dance instructor Yogan Bagat performed with a member of his Bollywood step dance troupe in celebration of Diwali, India's biggest national holiday. Councilman Jan Perry and a member of the city's sister city of Mumbai organized the special performance.
The celebration this year begins November the 13th and spans five days commemorating the return of Lord Rama from his 14-year-long exile, and involves the lighting of small clay lamps filled with oil to signify the triumph of good over evil.
Just like in India, Indian-Americans celebrate Diwali, or the Festival of Lights, with family gatherings, glittering clay lamps, fireworks, and the sharing of sweets. Downtown's newest park, Grand Park, hosted a showcase of Day of the Dead or Dia de los Muertos altars created by community artists. The altars are a way Mexicans and Mexican-Americans have traditionally honored ancestors and loved ones who have passed away.
The photographs you see are members of my family, several generations, and that is really the focal point of Dia de los Muertos.
Such an important part of the Latino expression and Latino tradition, but also it's been embraced by Angelinos throughout the county.
One artist's altar honored recently deceased astronaut Neil Armstrong and LA-based author Ray Bradbury. Councilmembers Richard Alarcon and Eric Garcetti honored the makeup and hairstylist guild in Council Chambers on the 75th anniversary of IA Local 706. Founded on November 1st, 1937, IA Local 706 currently represents 1,700 creative craftspeople in the entertainment industry. The labor union provides guaranteed basic wages, working conditions, health care and pension benefits for artists working on feature films, television commercials, live network television, all types of theater productions, and even Disneyland theme parks. It's been a dream 10 years in the making, but now one community finally has a universal all-access sports field where kids of all abilities can play. Anna Marcos has more.
No matter what your ability or disability, if you want to play ball, this is the place to do it. City leaders just dedicated the new all-access Barry Sanders Sports Field at Balboa Park, and kids of all abilities are trying out the turf.
It's an opportunity for them to do things that they can't on a grass field. A lot of my children are in lockers and wheelchairs, and wheels get caught on the turf all the time. It's so nice to have something like this. Plus, it's cushioned, so if they fall, they're not going to get hurt.
If you look around, you see no raised bases. You don't see any trip hazards or any falls hazards.
The sports field is named after Barry Sanders, a man who chairs the Board of Commissioners for LA Recreation and Parks and the Southern California Committee for the Olympic Games. It's clear from his own pitching form how much Sanders loves all things sports.
This field is for everyone. It provides inclusiveness, dignity, self-respect, and the respect of others to people who hunger for all of those things.
He wasn't just a big fan of the Olympics. He's a big fan and supporter of the Paralympics, of the Special Olympics. He recognizes that our parks and open space need to be available for everybody.
This sports field will become a focal point for events in the disabled community. For example, it will help host the International Special Olympics when it comes to town in 2015.
Sport became my lifeline. It was the opportunity to show that who I am was not amputated with my legs.
All disabled people, in fact, all people in general are just as capable as the next person.
Some can hit a T-ball and make it to first base. Others can knock down foam bowling pins. For others, learning to swat a soap bubble wand is a victory in itself. This field welcomes them all. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Organizers raised about $800,000 to build the sports field. Much of the money came from private donors and groups like the Annenberg Foundation and the LA 84 Foundation. In this week's list of things to do, a treasure hunt in Chinatown tasting the flavors of East LA and Mexican Revolution Day is celebrated. Looking for an exotic adventure without leaving LA? City Race is putting on the Great Chinatown Hunt on Saturday, November 17th, from 10:00 AM to 1:30 PM. The exciting clue-solving adventure will take you through one of the city's most colorful, diverse, and historic districts. You'll search for clues by navigating through traditional temples, hidden courtyards, and picturesque alleyways. Discover the sights, smells, and sounds of Asia all right here in Los Angeles. Meet at Chungking Plaza at 949 North Hill Street in Chinatown. But you've got to purchase tickets first by going to raceLA.com. To sample a different flavor, literally, join the Melting Pot Tours on Saturday, November 17th, from 9:00 AM to 1:15 PM for its East LA Latin Flavors Food and Culture Tour, which meets up at the Gold Line Station at 901 North Spring Street downtown. Start the day with delicious coffee and traditional pastries, then hop on the Metro Gold Line for a short train ride to discover the most amazing freshly handmade tamales. Then it's off to a tortilla factory to try all kinds of salsa, guacamole dips, and delicacies. There's much more to taste on this food tour, but you'll just have to join to find out by going to meltingpot tours.com. And Mexican Revolution Day will be celebrated at the El Pueblo de los Anjelis Historical Monument on Tuesday, November 20th, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The day marks the anniversary of the 1910 start of the popular movement, which led to the end of 34 years of military rule, the start of years of civil war, and the eventual establishment of the nation's constitution in 1917. The day will be celebrated with entertainment, artisans, children's workshops, and more. The El Pueblo Historical Monument is located at 200 North Main Street, right across from Union Station. Go to ci.la.ca.us/elp for more info. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. The Watts Towers Art Center's annual Jazz Festival is a can't-miss for many locals and music lovers, and organizers hope this festival and other arts events will make Watts a destination for even more Angelinos. The unmistakable sound of jazz floats through the air at the 36th Annual Simon Rodeo Watts Towers Jazz Festival. Named after the Italian-American artist who created the Watts Towers, the Jazz Festival is an event that brings out music lovers.
We're having a wonderful time here with multicultural drumming and jazz artists. For the first time, we have a jazz artist from Italy, directly from where Simon Rodeo was born, so we're really excited about that.
This jazz fan couldn't contain his excitement, expressing his joy from his fingers to his toes. And neither could this couple, who let also their fingers do the dancing.
We've been coming to Watts Towers for over 20 years for the great music, and fantastic music, and great food.
They bring the best music for the community, for adults as well as children.
The lineup featured the Watts Willowbrook Conservatory String Ensemble, the Azar Lawrence Ensemble, the Ray Bailey Trio, and many other talents.
I came down with my friends to the Watts Festival to see Mr. Ray Bailey. If you never heard him, he's one of the best guitars in the world, and the nicest man I ever met. And we're here to have a good time.
This is my first time here, and I like it very much. I enjoy the music.
And it's first-time festival-goers or even first-time Watts visitors that event organizers want to appeal to. They want folks to know the music, the art, and the food of South LA are rich in flavor and history, just like its residents.
We don't have to go up north to see fine art. We can see fine art in our communities. We do this work so that our young people can be proud of themselves and proud of their community.
And events like the Watts Towers Jazz Festival are a chance to show off that pride and to share the heart and soul of Watts with others through the universal language That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, everyone. It is Friday, November 16th. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Chambers. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. The public is welcome. With that said, Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could we please call the roll?
Alarcon Busciano Cardenas, Englander Garcetti, weizar Kariska Koyalabonj, Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosenall, Zine West, and Timmer is present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks move. Mr. Reyes, seconds. Next.
Committatory resolutions for approval.
Englander moves. Alarcon, seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes, I would love to. Let's go to item one.
Item number one is an item for which a public hearing has been held. However, there was not a quorum in committee, so council should provide an opportunity for public hearing for this item.
Do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards.
Okay, then we'll hold this item. Let's move to the next items, items two through 10.
Yes. Items two through 10 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, now, on item four, let's just kind of hold that on the desk for a minute until I think there's going to be a desire to continue that item, so if we can hold that. Do we have cards on these items?
Yes, cards on items two, three, four, six, and seven.
Okay, members' specials? Members' specials. Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Wait, wait, wait. What's wrong over there in the clerk section? I will slow down. Can we rock now? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right. It's a little too early to go into the special meeting, so that would bring us where, Madam Clerk?
Two presentations or items called special.
Okay, well, I think we'll start off today with a presentation. If I could ask Mr. Reyes to come forward and take the president's chair.
Okay, good morning, everyone. We have with us our council president, Herb Wesson.
Doctor, doctor, if I can get you, and you want to bring your entourage up as well? You're very attractive, and you're pastor. If you guys, you guys would come and stand around me? Thank you, Mr. President and members. I have the honor today to present to you a young man who has served this city, I believe, since 1962. He hails from Louisville, not Louisville, Louisville, Kentucky. He decided to go to the best schools that he could to study podiatry. So he picked one of the greatest cities in this country, which is Cleveland, Ohio, the town of my birth. So I appreciate that you went to that hub of higher learning. He's been in private practice again since October 1962. He became intrigued by this profession because of a foot ailment that he had himself. So again, he attended Ohio College of Pediatric Podiatry Medicine in Cleveland, Ohio. He then did a surgical internship at California Podiatry Hospital. He taught for a while at California College. He's been affiliated with Brockman, Daniel Freeman, Centinella, Marina Hospitals, and is currently a qualified medical examiner. He is a lifelong member of the NAACP, not NAACP, NAACP. He's won many awards, and I'd like to read some of those for you. An honorary alumnus at California College of Pa... I don't know why I want to keep calling it pediatric. I don't know. He's been in Who's Who in Black America. He received awards from my dear friend and mentor, the late Congressman Julian Dixon, honorary doctor of science degree from California College, and American Diabetes Association LR LA Chapter Circle of Giving Leadership Campaign. When you were born in the mid to late 30s, and you happened to be an African-American, many of us had small dreams, because that's the box we found ourselves in. many of us had small dreams, because that's the box we found ourselves in as a people. But Dr. Foster was not a man who was going to be kept in a box. And he educated himself, became very successful, and he stands before us today. And I ask you to please give a round of applause from this man from Louisville via Cleveland to California, Dr. Fa- Foster. Dr. Foster, would you like to say a few words? Come on. Oh, no, you know what? Let's do this first. Where'd he go?
Pastor McKnight.
Pastor McKnight, would you say a few words about your- a member of your flock?
Absolutely, shall be my honor. To members of the council, all the esteemed leaders of our community, it's a great pleasure to stand before you to say a word on behalf of a man of excellence, a man who has served our community with distinction for a number of years, a man who loves his God and loves his church and loves his family, my friend and brother, Dr. Oliver Foster. We at the Church of Christian Fellowship have been very favored to have him in service, but more importantly, we in our community have been favored to have a man who concerns himself with others and their well-being. He's a dear friend to our family of faith, and I count it a blessing to serve as his pastor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Doc, Doc, come on, now you- Doc, now you come speak. The mic is yours. Come on.
Counsel and members, I want to thank you very much for the opportunity that you have taken to honor me. As you see behind me are my staff, and everything that I have been involved in and all the successes I may have had have been a result of my staff. Two of these ladies have been with me for 41 years. One's been with me 28, another 18, and another six, and one who is not with us was with me for 24 years. I treat them like they're my daughters, and they all act like my daughters, and they get involved in everything that I do. I learned a long time ago when I was born that there wasn't anything that I could not do if I put myself to it, and that is what I have tried to do all of my life, is to share and not take honors for what I do, but to thank those who helped me and embraced my concept. I appreciate the time that you've taken this morning to honor me, and it certainly is not something that I ever expect, but it's something that I certainly appreciate. Thank you, and thank you.
So, Mr. President, to Dr. Foster, it is my honor to present to you a resolution signed by every member of this Los Angeles City Council. Thank you for all you've given, and we're thanking you in advance because we know you're going to give even more. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Doctor. Congratulations. Okay, so we have one more presentation from Councilman Corian, I believe, and being joined by Councilor Buscaino.
Come on, let's get the-
Yeah, get your staff. Get over here, Tom.
Jeremy?
Get your moes up here, come on. Come on, Jeremy.
Well, good morning, members. It's a pleasure for me to stand here with Councilmember Buscaino and present on a movement that started in 2003 in Melbourne, Australia. And yes, there really is a reason that you see the odd assemblage of mustaches that are behind me. Yes, I know, I came underdressed to the party, Mr. Garcetti, I know.
Pretty cool.
I know, well, that's a whole nother story. You may have been wondering, as you've been walking around City Hall, why there's so many folks who are suddenly looking something like Tom Selleck, or in some cases, more like the guy who played the daddy in Talladega Nights, but you get the whole range of them in City Hall. But the reason for this is very, as funny as it may be to look at some of these folks, the reason for it is actually quite important and quite serious. In 2003, in Melbourne, Australia, as a grassroots movement, a few people decided, what could we do to bring more awareness to testicular cancer and prostate cancer? And so, a couple of guys got together and said, "Let's grow the oddest-looking mustaches that we can," which caused people to start that conversation and start talking about it. It has since exploded around the world, and in 2011, more than 854,000 men and women around the world have participated and supported the Movember Campaign. And it's called that because in Australia, mustaches are called a "mo," and so this is done every year in Movember, hence Movember. The Movember Campaign in 2011 raised $126 million for cancer research, education, and prevention. It's been a fabulous success of grassroots advocacy and awareness. This has been something that's been important to my office for a number of years. Many of- everyone here in the room knows my extraordinary communications director, Jeremy Oberstein. You all know the great work that he does in bringing substantive information to the people of the San Fernando Valley, sometimes more successfully than some of our more traditional publications in the valley. And so, I'm very pleased to be able to have Jeremy here with us. He, for the last three years, has been Movember advocate and fundraiser and participant because a close friend of his was diagnosed with testicular cancer at the age of 25. And thankfully, his friend was able to beat the disease, and he's now healthy, but it really brought home to Jeremy and all of us the importance of bringing more awareness to this disease. You know, a disease that will affect more than 8,000 new cases this year, and 242,000 new cases of prostate cancer that were diagnosed in 2012 so far. So, we know the importance of this cause, and that's the reason that you've seen these folks around the building. One of those folks, of course, is our great colleague, Joe Buscaino, who has gone in whole hog in the effort, as you can see, and not only him, but the whole crew from CD-15. So, I'd like to introduce and thank for joining me our good friend, Joe Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. Corian. I'm really proud to stand with you in raising this awareness of prostate to testicular cancer throughout our city. I want to also thank Jason Hinks, the Chief Operating Officer of Movember, for taking time out of his busy schedule. Now, he's been in Los Angeles the last few weeks, but he's here to help us raise awareness for prostate and testicular cancer and promoting men's health, and we want to commend you, and we'll ask you to speak in a few minutes. And as Mr. Corian alluded to, you've noticed around council chambers, even a number of deputies and staff members, a handful of men sporting these mustaches to raise awareness in support of men's health. And all of the men on my staff have joined me, are growing their moes in support, and I want to applaud and commend their efforts. Specifically, my communications director, Branamir Kavartik, who led the charge at CD-15. And Branamir is also a cancer survivor. He's a living, breathing example of why men need to swallow pride and get screened for prostate and testicular cancer, and I'm also going to ask him to say a few words. And Branamir is just- I knew- he beat this because of his energy and his commitment to survival, and I'm so proud of you, Branamir, to call you a friend and also to be part of our team. Also, while some of us are painful to look at, we- what is truly painful is allowing prostate cancer to go unnoticed and unchecked. So, we want to make sure that we use this lighthearted event to raise awareness of a serious issue affecting men's health today. So, please, let this month and the facial hair you see today serve as a reminder to get screened for prostate and testicular cancer. Also joining me today is Eddie McKenna and Ricky Magana. They are both personal fitness coaches at Hayday Elite Fitness. It's a CrossFit gym in San Pedro. I train with them three days a week, and I've asked them to stand here with me as participants of Movember and promoters of men's health and fitness in general. Men over 40, please consult your physician and get checked today. I'm going to ask the COO, Jason Hinks, to come speak again from Australia. He's the Global Chief Operating Officer of Movember. Let's give a warm Los Angeles welcome to Mr. Hinks.
Thank you for that warm introduction. A question that's often asked to me when I first talk about Movember is, "Why grow a mustache?" For the most part, growing a mustache can be a bit of a challenge. It's itchy, your wife, girlfriend, significant other doesn't want to touch you, you make small children cry, and in my case, you look-
No offense, Richard.
And in my case, you look like a 70s gym teacher, who's a little on the sketchy side. But the benefits of the mustache are undisputed. Firstly, you save money on razors. It can take the focus off a bad haircut. It's- you can savor the taste of soup for up to nine hours after you've eaten a bowl. But perhaps the most important benefit of the mustache is the fact that, as you heard before, last year, it raised $126 million for men's health. From its humble beginnings in a bar in Melbourne in 2003 to this year, when I'm happy to say over 1 million participants will be participating, spread across 21 countries, Movember has become a global movement. The funds raised in the U.S. go towards testicular and prostate cancer in the areas of awareness and education, survivorship, and research. But it's not just about the funds raised, it's about those conversations that these little furry billboards under our nose initiate. And every year, we get literally thousands of calls to our call center from men who, for the first time through the mustache, have had conversations with their fathers, their uncles, their grandfathers about health. And it's these conversations that lead to better education, better help-seeking behavior, and we know that those things in turn save lives. So, I'm very humbled to be standing in front of such an impressive group of mustaches, and I'm happy to say that Movember is very proud to welcome City Hall as a safe haven for the mustache, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Also, I'd like to bring up Branamir Kavartik, who you've seen elbow Betsy at times to take to get that right shot. That energy really also led him to beat cancer, and Branamir, come say a few words.
I feel privileged and honored to stand up here today. As a two-time cancer survivor, I feel very obligated to remind everybody here that there is a cure for cancer. The cure for cancer is simply early detection. Find a disease early, and the odds of survival approach 90%, but find it late, after the tumor has metastasized, and treatment requires infusions of toxic chemicals and blasts of brutal radiation, a prognosis as miserable as the experience, as Councilmember Rosenthal should know. Both of my cases were detected early, early enough. After taking my Robitussin, I was able to continue living a normal and very fruitful life. I was cured of cancer. I wear this mustache as a reminder to all men to suck it up and go get your pipes checked out. Ask your doctor to do whatever he has to do to make sure that something is not actively killing you. What did not kill me made me stronger, and that is why today I am here with you, participating in the evolving history of this unique city. I feel very confident that this simple and fun act of this presentation, recognizing the absolute brilliance of the Movember Campaign, will save many lives because we are reminding people about early detection. The Movember Campaign organically acts as an icebreaker, making it easy for men to talk to each other, not just about cancer, but for men to simply talk to each other. I am proud to be a part of this group of Movember bros who are changing the face of men's health. Councilmember Buscaino, boss, thank you for doing this, thank you for being a friend, thank you for being a brother.
All right, brother, I love you. Now, if I may, call up Ricky Magania. He's the co-owner of Hayday Fitness in San Pedro, CrossFit Gym in downtown San Pedro. Ricky?
Good morning, council members. When Joe asked us to come today, we jumped at the chance because three years ago, me and Eddie started this gym, and we had a passion for helping people get healthier. And when something like cancer comes into your life, it's not always in your control, and we can't always say, you know, "Exercise more, eat better." But what we can say is, "Take the steps so that you can find early detection." Both of my parents are actually cancer survivors. My father survived prostate cancer. He found it because he was in the hospital for something else completely unrelated, and thankfully, through those tests, he was able to find the cancer. It's much harder to do that on your own unless something has brought you there. So, what we urge people to do is take charge and get screened. And not only that, but take the steps that are in your control to stay healthy now. Eat healthy and exercise, find the time. I tell people a lot, if you don't make the time to be healthy, you'll have to make the time to be sick. It's sort of a morbid statement, but it's very true, and it's worth thinking about. Thank you for having us here today, and hopefully, the mustaches are a catalyst for you getting screened. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I think Jason gave most of my speech, which is great, but I just wanted to thank you all because this has been a great month for those of us who didn't grow out our mustaches. You know, when we ran out of snacks in the back, we could just take crumbs off of your face. You know, your willingness to be laughed at during that awkward moment, which some of you are still in, so give it another month or so. You know, the bravery to be mistaken for BIT players and Boogie Nights. I mean, to look straight through at the ways that you have shown your courage, the sheer valor to look in the mirror and to see Dennis Zine staring back at you. I mean, you guys have showed and earned your stripes here. But my- I have dear friends who are testicular cancer survivors, and it always comes to you early, or it often comes to you early in your 20s and your 30s, so have the courage to do something about that. My father's a- my parents are five-time cancer survivors, my father most recently with prostate cancer, and so, thank you for doing this. This hits every family, it hits everybody's lives, and let's continue doing that because there is a lot of shame in the game right now, but I think what you're going to do is turn that corner. So, congratulations, and you know, you don't have to let them go in the holidays. We need some folks to dress up for Santa Claus, so keep going, and we'll see what we can do. Thank you, guys, and congratulations.
Mr. Reyes.
You know, I think it's very important that this council take positions that allows us to promote this notion of preventive measures and how we take these steps to prevent diseases. With good health comes good diets, checkups, and to bring this to light is very important. But I also want to take a moment to defend the mustaches. I mean, I grew up with mustaches all my life. I don't see anything funny about it. I think it's cool, it's part of my culture. I stand up for the mustaches, and this is a great way of opening up our eyes to our cultural differences. But if you want to keep them in my book, that'll be all right. Congratulations.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Each and every one of you, especially Australians, many great things come from Australia. In September, we lit the building blue for Blue September for Cancer Awareness. Just recently, the National Football League, from the officials to the players to the coaches, always wore pink for breast cancer. My wife's a breast cancer survivor. My wife's a breast cancer survivor. I have seven brothers, two of them are survivors, and it's so important to get checked. And Mike Haynes, the great Hall of Fame defensive back, is leading a program called Check Your Stats, where he is reminding everyone to check their stats so they know where they are and do this right. So I want to do that. And I do especially want to thank the Australians for everything they do, all the way, all the time. Good job. And good job there, Joe. You're, you look pretty good for a guy from San Pedro. That's right.
Mr. Zine.
Well, I want to congratulate you all. I was told by some doctors that the longer you live, the closer you are to having prostate cancer. The percentages go up with your age, and it's obvious that someday we're all going to pass, but we want to postpone that obviously as long as possible. So it's important that all of us have that check. And I'm growing this so I can play Santa Claus during the holiday season, and that's why I'm growing the goatee with all that white in there. But in, scary Santa Claus, thanks, Richard. I won't be scared of you. So what we want to do is make sure we get the message out and all of the issues that affect us in society, the older you get, the higher incidence, the higher percentage for prostate cancer. So it's incumbent to have those checks, very, very critically important. Thank you, Mr. Kocorian, and thank you, Mr. Busciano, and all of you that are here to support this cause. Hopefully, people will listen to this cause, get that check. It doesn't take a lot of time. It is somewhat embarrassing, it is somewhat, and I've done that check. It, it's not painful, but it is very, very necessary. So as you say, get it done and get it done as soon as you can. Thank you.
Mr. Alacon.
Well, I rise, really take issue with some of the comments the founder made about mustaches. Having had this mustache since I was 19, I, I have to say that the people that I've seen with new mustaches this week actually look far better than they did before. Although I do, I have to admit that my seatmate, Mr. Buscaino, looks better in a sort of Sons of Anarchy kind of way, and that's okay too. But this is a very serious subject, and I want to thank you for, for this. And those of us who hesitated for years and years and years to, to go get that first exam can say that it's, it's really something that needs to be done, and people can make all the jokes they want about it, but the fact of the matter is, it saves lives and it could very much be yours. And so, the idea of spreading awareness in this quirky kind of way, and although I think it, it has improved the, the look of many of the people who are wearing mustaches, and if they're like me and they have a funny upper lip, you know, it's, it's really a great thing. This is something that I think is, is very worthy. And so I want to thank Joe for, and his, his staff for bringing this to, giving us this opportunity to laugh a little bit about something very serious at the same time, doing so, spreading the word about something that needs to be spread, that men need to be more responsible with their own health. There's nothing tough about being, about having prostate cancer. You just gotta, you gotta avoid it if you can.
So thank you, Mr. Kocorian, and Mr., why do I have a feeling, Buscaino, that you're up to something? But anyway, Mr. Kocorian.
Well, Mr. Wesson, we, Joe and I just want to thank you and Mr. Alacon for your year-round dedication to awareness. It means a lot to so many. But for those who aren't as aware as the two of you about this issue, you can, anybody watching on TV can go to www.movember.com. That's the site where you'll find more information about the Movember movement, and also you'll find ways that you can help and participate and contribute, and I would urge you all to do so. So with that, Joe and I would like to present this resolution to Jason commemorating Movember for 2012.
All right, just give him a round of applause.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, thank you, guys. Okay, Madam Clerk, that concludes the presentation portion of today's agenda. I'd like to request that Item 4 be continued to November 20th. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also, I, if I could suggest that the council instruct the clerk to place on Tuesday's agenda, the ordinance to be submitted by our office.
Without objection. Okay, Madam Clerk, I think you said we had cards on Item 1?
Yes.
Arnold Sacks, please come forward.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Item 1 refers to the $95,000 Transportation Development Act funds. And that's very important for the public to understand. The Transportation Development Act funds are a quarter cent of the sales tax that you pay on all the items that you get taxed on. And why is that important? Because Measure R is a half cent, as is Prop A and Prop C. And because the city council has now moved forward with a half cent or wants to put on a ballot a half-cent sales tax that according to the CAO will generate over $210 million in revenue, the public should have an idea of what kind of revenue is being developed for the city or generated from Measure R, Prop A and Prop C. Although the way it's divided out is a little unique, Measure R is a half-cent sales tax. Half-cent sales tax for the city is going to develop $205 million, $210 million. Do the math. If you have problems with potholes or street repair or transit-oriented problems in your community, and you're not concerned about where the money's going, don't complain. But if you know that the half-cent sales tax that the city council is contemplating generates $210 million, then you should have an idea the city is getting $210 million alone for Measure R, based on how the funding is broken out from the county and from the state. So you got problems with potholes? Find out where your money's going. You want to find out where your money's going? Ask your council members when they have time after their presentations. Maybe they'll have an answer for you, and maybe you'll get your potholes fixed.
Thank you. If you'd stay close, Mr. Sacks, I'm going to call your, going to call your name the next couple of cards. Okay, on this item, no speakers on the queue. Let's, I, I don't have it, but Mr. Walsh, I, I certainly believe you.
They just came in.
Oh, they just came in. John, it just came in. Come on.
It just came in. It's not the officer, the officer did the good job.
Come on, John. Come on.
The officers give the card, they see my name, they tear it up. Okay?
Come on.
At least you don't murder me here, the way in El Salvador, where they would murder me for what I'm saying here. And in most countries in the world, they would murder me for what I say here. That's why I love you. Okay, this concerns Ciclovia. This is $1 million of the quarter cent state sales tax going to Ciclovia. It's too much money. They've cut a million hours, MTA, out of bus service. Ciclovia is fun, and I want to say something about Ciclovia. I see them. They're all, 90% of the bike riders are between the ages of 20 and 35, and they are 98% male. Go look at it. It's for, and they all own cars, 80% of them own cars. Go to hell with Ciclovia. Mr. Garcetti, anybody but Garcetti for mayor, uses Ciclovia as a campaign tool for mayor. HollywoodHens.org.
Okay, Dow House dude, and is there Aaron Pauly? Aaron Pauly, come forward.
Yes, I'm only going to speak one minute, but I agree with him about if you spend a million dollars, why don't you provide housing for everyone? Don't be stupid. Anyway, Ciclovia, well, I do psychotherapy every day. You know what that is? I ride my bicycle. Psychotherapy, so it is good to ride a bike, and I'm not under 35, I'm 60, almost four. In one more month, are you going to celebrate my birthday, two days after Jesus?
Stay on a subject.
Uh, yeah, the subject is Ciclovia. And I like it, but I don't agree with all the money spent. But maybe you make more money than you spend, so I don't really know. Bye.
Mr. Pauly, Aaron, welcome.
Thank you, it's Aaron Paley.
Paley, I apologize.
Thank you, it's okay. I want to thank the, the council for their past support for Ciclovia. I think that the city should be proud that this is the largest event of its kind in the nation, and that other cities and other people all over the country are looking at Los Angeles as an example for how we can transform our streets and make them available and accessible to all peoples. I want to also thank Councilman Weezer for his support in pushing this motion through, through transportation, and Councilman Garcetti, Perry, and Labange for their past support. This is something that with this money, we're going to be able to go to many more council districts and expand Ciclovia throughout Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you so much for this motion here today. Any of us that have been out for Ciclovia know that this is actually a way that people get around town, and the amount of money that we just put into only those motorized vehicles, 150,000 people coming out on the streets of Los Angeles, from East Hollywood to Boyle Heights, South LA, Chinatown, and everything in between, has been an extraordinary part of a revolution that's happening underfoot here in Los Angeles. Thank you to Aaron and the entire committee who looked at the ways that we could bring something called Ciclovia, which means bicycle way, that came out of Bogota, Colombia. I know the mayor, when he's going to be on his trip, is going to Bogota as part of his trip to Latin America. But we have seen a transformation and a reduction in emissions. We saw people who came in from the inland empire on MetroLink, where MetroLink was able to take out seats and actually put bike racks, folks who came up from South Bay, that means money for the city of Los Angeles when they spend their tax dollars here. It's gotten so popular, you have to wait two or three cycles of a light just on Spring Street alone. And we have really seen something that has been tremendous in this city. I think we should be having this every month in the city of LA, but this will, this is the use of taxpayer dollars for what taxpayers clearly want to do. And so I encourage everybody to continue supporting Ciclovia and making sure that we have what has become really a signature. It's the largest such undertaking in the United States now. Other cities have done it, but Los Angeles is number one. And to give you an idea of how big it was, it's a space 10 times longer than Central Park. That is an open space we create overnight, and the music, the culture, the food, and everything that's, highlights our neighborhoods, even Boyle Heights in Mr. Weezer's district. Can't tell you how many people said, "I've never been to Hollenbeck Park, what a beautiful park." And it takes people back there on days when we don't have Ciclovia, simply because we show the city off. So let's continue moving forward with this and making sure this is a core part of Los Angeles.
Mr. Labange.
The greatness of Los Angeles is our neighborhoods. And what is great about a city is some people come up with an idea, and they come forth, and then it catches the heart of the people. And as someone who participates in Ciclovia with my family, my wife Bridgette and children, it is a great thing. I would love to see it in the San Fernando Valley, I'd love to see it along the Orange Line, if we get that Orange Line to take a rest midday on a Sunday. But those, Mr. Paley, I thank you for those who stood up and created. I thank those who stood up and created the marathon, as you know, Mr. Wesson, Dr. Burke, after the 84 games. These are celebrations of a city, and if you do not celebrate a city, you are not a city. We're a great city. And I want to thank Joe Buscaino, who closed the St. Vincent Thomas Bridge, not because Bobby De Niro was filming there, but because he had people walk over there for a program. These are important celebrations. I rise to support it.
Mr. Alacon.
Anytime we talk about cycling, I want to weigh in on, on the, the practical side of cycling. As much as Ciclovia is, is about, about the recreational uses, I hope that people recognize that it's also becoming more and more functional for people going to work. In fact, every day, it seems, particularly in this downturned economy, that more and more people are riding their bikes to work and to school. And there was a period where people did not ride their bikes for these uses, and now it's growing. In fact, I even saw Dow House dude, dude riding his bike down Lancashire Boulevard in North Hollywood a couple of weeks ago. And so I know he really does use psychotherapy. So, so I, I just, I just want to encourage us that when we're, when we're promoting bicycling, let's not look at, at it as simply a recreational activity. It is, it is becoming much more practical, functional, and with the high cost of gas, a lot of people are turning to bicycling to make ends meet. And so I hope that, that this money will, in some way, be able to be used to encourage people to use it for going to school and for going to work.
Mr. Weezer.
Just wanted to repeat what some of my colleagues had said, that this is a wise investment of our taxpayers' dollars in making sure that we have all the benefits that come with Ciclovia, from health, from some of the shops that people see and get visited again, from people who've never been by, know that that flower shop was there, that bicycle shop was there, that snocon shop was there. But more than anything, we once had an LA street scene here, one, an outdoor music festival that surrounded City Hall. I remember as a kid, I would come to that, and it was a great way to interact with a lot of other Angelenos, and made us feel part of the city. After that event ended, we haven't had something that's so large in scope that brings so many Angelenos together and feel part of a great city. And I think this has become that. It started off as a way to promote more cycling and for the health benefits, et cetera, but there's been so many payoffs in so many different ways. But I think one of the things I'm walking away with this past year that I attended was when you just see people from all walks of life, talking to one another, interacting, feeling part of the city, where before you really didn't have that. And people are, the spirit for LA, the pride in LA heightens because of Ciclovia. So that's another benefit amongst many that we see from this great event. So thank you to all who made this possible, and we hope to continue it. Hopefully, the costs go down so we could have, Mr. Garcetti, possibly monthly or however often we can afford it.
Mr. Reyes.
You know, colleagues, imagine the bicycle plan that we supported and passed a few months ago. It was an effort, a culture that we are embracing. There's been a silent majority out there, the transit dependent, who have been on bikes all these years. And that transit dependent population has been dodging cars, putting their life in their hands. Now that we have surfaced this great culture that embraces all income groups, all ethnicities, all cultures throughout the city, we, as a legislative body, were able to promote this bicycle plan that now is highlighted through the Ciclovia. But to me, the multi-power effect of that economic development engine that helps those little mom and pop restaurants, that will be visited, as described by Councilman Garcetti and Councilman Weezer, all of you have cited those examples, where in MacArthur Park, Mama's Hot Tamales gets visited because folks from the West Side are able to taste tamales from Central America, didn't have to fly to Panama to taste Panamanian tamales. I mean, this is the kind of, of energy that's being generated by this great event, but more importantly, speaking to the infrastructure that we need to develop so it can become less dependent on fossil fuels, we lower that heat footprint, but more importantly, learn more about each other and get to know who our neighbors are and enjoy a great day in Los Angeles. So I'm so elated that we can get to this point and hopefully see it continue to progress as we build out our bicycle plan.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. So on this item, no speakers in the queue, let's open the roll.
Roll call.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now we'll move to Item 3, Mr. Arnold Sacks and Dow House dude. Okay, Mr. Dude. Mr. Dude, Mr. Dude. Mr. Dude, next time I call you to the mic and you don't come, I'm going to have an issue with you. Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Again, numerous times I've come before the city council and asked the question, you're spending pennies on rent escrow accountability, yet you haven't spent any pennies on picking up foreclosed property monies, that you went through the motions of creating an ordinance that would cause banks to have... that would cause banks to have to pay $1,000 a day for homes that were run down and blighted in the neighborhood that weren't being kept up. You haven't paid for the legislation time that you took to create that ordinance, yet you're talking about rent escrow, you're talking about taxes, raising sales tax. How can that be possible? In a couple of years, you'll be doing a budget and somebody is saying...
He's not talking about the rent escrow program. Get back to the rent escrow, Mr. Sacks. Get back to the rent. Okay, Mr. Dude.
Yes, he explained the rent, what did you call it? That program, anyway. Escrow program. It's about housing. We need to go as far as creating a different way to do real estate. Right now, it totally sucks because everybody is homeless. You get it? We need a different way to do business. And when you change the way we do real estate, a lot of other things will change. Nobody will be called homeless, nobody will get beat up by the police for not having a place to be, blah, blah, blah. Thank you.
Okay, no more speakers. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Now we'll go to item six, Mr. Arnold Sacks on item six.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. This is another chasing the tail situation. You spent months of time putting through legislation to create an ordinance requiring condoms for porn acting, porn films. And yet now you're turning around requesting film credits. You talk about, not necessarily the film, but all the people that work behind the scenes, all the cameramen, all the people, all the technicians that get involved in the business. And yet now, nobody stood up and said, "You know what? If we put this requirement on porn, which is actually a big producer of revenue in a valley, they may leave, they may go to other places." Where's our sales tax go to then? Where's our tax money come from then? But let's support state legislation after we've gone behind their back and created a more difficult working area.
Mr. Dude.
Yes, bring out the condoms, baby. Bring out the condoms. Anyway, you know, the porn industry, the film industry, all these industries make millions, billions of dollars. What happened to housing for everyone? The housing authority was disbanded, et cetera, et cetera. That's all I got to say. Why are we doing all this stupid Batman, Superman, et cetera, et cetera, instead of doing housing first and then going back to all those stupid things? Bye.
John, did you have a card on six? Well, come on up, I believe you. Sargent, I seem to be losing cards.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Let's start at 1913. There was nothing here but orange groves, okay? And the sheeps came through from the valley, from San, through to Hollywood and then downtown. We were created by the motion picture industry, the city, the county, Southern California. I'm not one of those old white guys who says, "Oh, I don't want to do this thing." Hey, we owe a debt to TV, radio show business, and to give them a little bit more back on their tax money will not, is no skin off our nose. They have done a fantastic job. They do it now. They're pretty good. I want the businesses here. I want the industry here. And the porno industry, you know what they can do to themselves and then they can videotape it and sell it. HollywoodHighlands.org, one minute.
Councilmembers, I rise on this item to point out that this recommendation was made by the Jobs and Business Development Committee several years ago, and I'm very disappointed that two years after the city attorney was directed to draft an ordinance, we don't have an ordinance. And once again, we find that notwithstanding a recommendation, what occurred in this case was, I made a recommendation as chair of the Jobs and Business Development Committee that we give a sales tax rebate to companies that did a majority of their production in the city of Los Angeles. I believe it was 70% or 75%, something like that. We had a report back from the Finance Department, the Office of Finance, and they recommended that we do this. And we supported, sent it to council, and then we directed the city attorney to prepare the ordinance. And so I want to thank Mr. Garcetti for reviving this concept because I think it's going to create jobs, I think it's going to encourage production companies to produce their films in Los Angeles. And once again, I'm stymied as to why certain ordinances take longer than others, and in this case, two years is simply unacceptable. And so I rise to support the rejuvenation of this idea. I think it was a good idea then, two years ago. I think it's a good idea today. And every day that we delay this is another day that we are not encouraging, incentivizing the film industry to stay in Los Angeles.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Alakon, and thank you for us coming together in 2010 to introduce a motion to create a local tax incentive. From this, colleagues and committee, we had a couple additional recommendations. One, we asked the city attorney to report back on the status of that council file for the local sales use tax refund issues for production purchases and expenditures made in the city for filming. Secondly, we asked the CAO to survey city departments to identify all revenues generated by fees and services, charges to the industry as part of an annual fee for service study to look at opportunities for incentives there. And third, we looked at instructing the CLA CAO in the Office of Finance to research and report back on additional incentives for video gaming and other digital media. In 30 days, I was just talking to a CEO of a large studio here that's opening a new video game, ARM, and Montreal, gave them the red carpet, said that they're going to give them tax incentives. When asked, is Montreal a center of video gaming? They said, no, but they're coming to us, so we're going to go there and they're going to announce this in the next two weeks. The video gaming industry is bigger than Hollywood in terms of the receipts. It's an incredible part of that same creative class that is here. So let's do this today. We passed already item number five, which looked at expanding, Mr. Krikorian and I had a motion, look at expanding the tax breaks that we've given for filming to also radio and television broadcasting, which, you know, can go someplace else and the signal can be sent from another city, another town. And this is something we worked closely with the Motion Picture Association of America and various studios on getting done. That's been passed already. This item six will be another very important step. This morning, I was with the Hollywood community in, the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce did a summit on filming issues, looking at piracy, looking at incentives, looking at runaway production. We aren't defenseless, colleagues, and later on, hopefully next month, we'll also be looking at the motion Mr. Krikorian and I put forward to make filming pilots in the city of Los Angeles free, and if they get picked up, hopefully the first year, we'll waive those fees. And I can't tell you how many folks have said, "That could make the difference of whether I can convince my corporate masters to allow me to film in Los Angeles or not." We know the millions of dollars, the thousands of jobs that are created when we're able to keep that here. So I ask for your support today. Thank you to Mr. Alakon and Mr. Krikorian for your strong support in these motions as well. And let's make sure that we draw the line and tell cities like New York, we are the filming capital of America and of the world.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. LeBange.
Mr. Garcetti, thank you, and I know this morning you spoke at the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, which focused on this very concept of production. Think how many times film has been shot in this very special building. Think how many times we've had opportunities to do production here. The saddest fact with production leaving California, it's breaking up families. Let's not break up families. Let's take something that really is ours and enhance it and get people to work. And Mr. Wesson, someone very famous once said, "A rock's a rock, a tree's a tree, go shoot it in Gritham Park." And we got to do that, keep production here. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and I know Mr. Krikorian and everybody, and Ms. Perry for allowing so much production downtown because we want to keep jobs in LA.
Thank you. Okay, on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, let's move to item seven. We have cards on item seven, Mr. Arnold Sacks. Yes, Mr. Krikorian.
Sorry, before we move on to item seven, I'd like to ask, I'd like to move for reconsideration of item number nine for purposes of submitting an amending motion, please.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration on item nine. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, that item is now before us. Mr. Krikorian, have you already submitted? Has it been circulated?
It's being circulated now, thank you.
Okay, then we'll go back now to item seven as they circulate the amending motion. Arnold Sacks, Daniel Jones, John Walsh, Dal House Dude. Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you again. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. You know, I believe it was beginning of last year, maybe a little longer, when the state legislation was discussed regarding elimination of the redevelopment agencies. And the mayor of LA, Antonio Villarreal, has mentioned, if they do that, they're going to eliminate $900 million worth of funding for redevelopment agencies. You know what happened? We never heard that number used again, never got an explanation of how we came up with that. So this past year, I think it was in February or March, the city council took some action on the redevelopment agency, where they had $650 million approximately, where they used $200 million plus to pay for previous measures, and they rolled over 400, over $450 million into other funds. But we don't find out what that's going on. So now you're going to create this other agency, where you're going to get the money and who, under whose leadership?
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Jones. I'm against this item because it's a gimmick. It's the receiving end of the community project funds that are going to go to the staple for the football stadium. They put it in an ad hoc committee in the planning commission, where that money needs to be moved over to a receiving end, to a new type of residential development agency, which I'm curious to know as to why everybody's selling all that property right now at discount prices. Not telling anybody about those little actions, are you, about the leftover in redevelopment agency properties? Now you're going to try to shift the staples, project money, whatever it's going to be called, into general funds, and this is how you're going to do it, and it's going to benefit the developers. I'm not against that. But that money that was spent on the football stadium is supposed to stay in that community. This is just a receiving ad hoc committee. My father told me what ad hoc means. You put beans in it because you take it away from the people. Ham hark. I know the language, people. I'm sorry for using that type of language. I told you I was a wordsmith, and this is another multimillion dollar gimmick. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Dude, and then Mr. Walsh.
I know, this is, this sounds really, really, really funny, the committee on economic development. Guess what? Most of your neighborhoods are depressed economically. What are you talking about economic development? Nobody can go anywhere because they cannot buy a place and work without getting taxed to death, without having to pay all those tickets, et cetera. You are depressing everybody's economy, and don't you realize that? And you're here for economic development? Give it a break, babies. Get smart, change the system, really change the system. You are not the government, you're only the administration of the people's money. Remember that. Don't even think for one minute that you are the government.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A, indias.org or Walsh Confidential. Ordinarily, I say ad hoc committees, please, no. But this is a very special ad hoc committee because it concerns the aftermath of the elimination of the CRA. So I am 100, we are 100% on our website in favor of this because I made my appearance first on the public comment 40 years ago, 40. Forty years ago, at a CRA meeting in Hollywood, you know what I said? "I will live to bury you." And they all laughed at me. But 40 years later, I attended the funeral of the CRA. I'm here, they aren't. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, on this item, there are no speakers on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, has the amendment been circulated on item nine?
Yes, Mr. President.
So let's go to item nine, let's open the roll.
And this is as amended.
As amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, now I'd like to recess the regular meeting, go into the special meeting. Could you please call the roll?
Alakon Buscaino-Carden, it's Englander Garcetti, Weezer, Krikorian, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosna, Zine, Wesson, 13 members present, and Akor, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. So we're on item 11. Arnold Sacks, did you say he's out of time?
For the special meeting, he'll have...
Oh, okay, so Mr. Sacks, Mr. Walsh, and Mr. Dude. So Arnold Sacks, and whoever is at closest to the mic, please speak.
Is there a presentation, sir?
Arnold Sacks?
Is there a presentation?
No.
Arnold Sacks, speaking on this item relative to zone change for property located at 100 Universal City Plaza. I'm just curious, having come to some of these hearings on zone changes, especially like regarding the Project LA Live, how it was manipulated through council and passed the public where things were done or vetted out without actually being discussed in chambers. Same thing happened at Loyola Marymount, where any disputes that come up will not be handled by building and safety, but will be handled by planning and land use. It was stipulated in that discussion regarding the development around Loyola Marymount University. So what gets happened here? And just look at the history now, past history, look what happened at LA Live with the sale of Ann Schultz. The mayor-owned negotiating team had a different take on information. Same thing with the convention center. The mayor's own negotiating team had a different take on the negotiations. So what team is representing the negotiations here? How do we know? Oh, well, the city council says so, and we know the city council, when they say something, is open and transparent. So that ends that argument. How open and how transparent? That's another question to be asked. But just curious, are there any other negotiating teams involved in this? Anything revolving public transportation? Any other questions that come up in all these other developments? And advertising, what about digital advertising in the area? Are those questions?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't have a card on you, Perry Crouch, you know you got to fill out a card. Mr. Sacks, you have to fill out a card. Go get one from the sergeant.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, nude pictures of the mayor's girlfriend, Kate Del Castillo, go to it. Let me tell you here what this is. This is a zone change in the valley. And listen to this gobbledygook. Zone change from OS 1XL to RE 14-1 to R-1-1 to Q to C2-1... Zone change from OS 1XL to RE 14-1 to R-1-1 to Q to C2-1 to 1SN. Okay, this is the way you look at it. Upzone or downzone? Upzone means they want to put a mini mall in your neighborhood. Downzone means you're fighting for your neighborhood and you don't want crap in your neighborhood, okay? Now, I look around here and I don't see any people complaining about this downzoning. And if there's no one complaining about it, that means it must be okay, okay? Because white people are very territorial. We're very territorial. If they were screwing the people there, they'd be here. So who cares? HollywoodHighlands.org, zone it, change it.
Mr. Dude.
I agree with him in that, well, he said white people. There's no white people. Everybody's a little bit pink, a little bit brown, a little bit, you know?
He's not talking about this item.
Get on item 11.
Well, he mentioned white people, okay? There's no white people.
No, just get on 11.
Anyway, all this, and he also said territorial. That is my point. We are so damn territorial that we don't let each other have a place. See? All these ordinances, all these zone changes, all these territory changes, and what do we do? Spend millions and billions of dollars and we don't get any housing done for the people that give you the money to be talking all this BS. Thank you.
Dr. Perry Crouch.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I just kind of stepped by to just say thank y'all so much. We got the crime rate down, steady coming down, and y'all doing a good job. We love you. Y'all know this is the holiday.
This is not regarding the zone change.
Perry, you have to read, and you know I love you, but you have to read the agenda. This is not general public comment. You have to speak specifically to the item. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, colleagues. I stand to ask for an eye vote. I want to give Councilor Labange and the Plotters' efforts. This is one of those projects that with this zone change will promote close to 30,000 jobs, 10,000 to 12,000 permanent jobs. We're talking about 800,000 new square footage in the city, 1.4 million square footage in the county. And this is about making the Universal Studios facility a great attraction for the next decade or so. What's real crucial here is that you did have consensus from all the stakeholders. There was an ability to activate the Alley River Corridor. So with a $3.8 million river improvement program, there'll be connectivity that allow for this culture to continue to develop, but more significantly, create another anchor for the Alley River Corridor. So given all of these improvements, we are speaking to the type of work that creates jobs and improves our economy, but more importantly reflects how hard our planning department has worked on this. It just likes to plan for understand. And I'd like to give a big round of applause because these folks work really hard. And I know they're not used to that because they're always grinding away on all our major projects. But the fact is, between the city attorney, planning department, and all the other departments, we were able to achieve this goal. And Councilor Labange, again, and his staff, Renee, were able to reach this level, this threshold of accomplishment. Now, this is one of a series of actions that will continue to follow. I believe we have development agreement next, or down the line, and we have one more action, I believe. So with that, we can start construction and a new day for our economy and continue to promote the River Corridor. So I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you. With that said, no more speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
A forthwith to the mayor. Thank you, and I want to thank Mr. Reyes, Mr. Wesson, and I do want to thank the planning staff and the advocates, but more importantly, the community and all people who've worked there and will work in the future, and all the tourists who will come. Universal City is the economic engine of the San Fernando Valley. Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson.
Okay, without objection, forthwith on that item.
Forthwith on Renee White, sir, one of the greatest of all employees, our planning deputy, Renee.
Okay, let's adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting. That brings us to item two.
Yes, call special for cards.
Kristin Seidhelm, and I know I butchered that name, Jim Clark. Louis Einstein. Jim, you can just come on.
Mr. President, the first name you wrote, I think I put in the top corner, that she just wanted to be for the record. Is that there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she didn't want to speak. But I'll take her time on top of mine.
No, you're first, and you have your time.
Oh, okay. It's my second time here this week, but I promise you guys, I'm not gonna become a gadfly. Jim Clark with the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, thank you for the time. We're here to discuss the confirmation of Mercedes Marquez as general manager of the Housing Department of the City of Los Angeles. I just want to say this, for the last two years, we have had a great experience with the Housing Department. We've built a better relationship with them. We have improved communications, including quarterly meetings with their management team. We have, there's a looped video that runs in the downstairs office where landlords come in to discuss their problems that actually pitches the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles and some of the classes and things that we provide for owners. It's actually an infomercial that runs at the Housing Department. It's a great deal. We have a better outreach coming out of the department to owners. They're doing a series of classes with regard to the RSO and the systematic code enforcement program. These are things that we did not have before. And is it a coincidence? I don't know. But I just want to make sure that if Mercedes is confirmed today, that these things don't change. A lot of them came out of the 2009 rent study, something that we spent $1 million on, and these were some of the recommendations that came out of it. And to have them thrown out would be a waste of a million bucks. So we just don't want to see those things reversed. The bottom line is, is we have a grand sense of cooperation with the department. We also, finally, we have a working group that is owners and tenants discussing problems that are mutual and trying to come to conclusions to rectify the situations. It's communication between the two groups that we never had before. Again, this has happened over the last two years while she's been out, and I just, I want to say that, please, we do not want to see it revert back to what it was.
Thank you very much. We have Louis Einstein. Then we'll have John Walsh.
Hi, Louis Einstein here. I'm a property owner in L.A. I strongly, strongly oppose the confirmation of Mercedes Marquez. For me, this is a declaration of war against property owners in L.A. If she's back there, there's, I mean, it's guerrilla warfare, basically. She's an extremely corrupt official. When she was here before, she, under her tenure, 13,500 units were lost in housing. That's her record. I don't know why you'd have her back. I think anyone on the street would do a better job than her. And we need to start getting actual property owners up in the Housing Department who know how to manage properties and know what it takes, and they could deal with landlords and stuff like that. I have an article here from employees of the Housing Department who said she paid thousands of dollars to a Zen Buddhist priest from Hawaii for management training that included she breathing with sphincter control and learning how to stand and playing with wood and sticks. And she paid $18,000 for this with taxpayer money. She also hired a lady named Norma, and she was paid for Mercedes to become a priestess. After the next meeting, Mercedes was elevated to high priestess. The whole purpose of the Zen training was to elevate Mercedes' stature in the Buddhist temple. After a half hour, the building management sent security guards to the parking lot to stop it. There's also a corruption. She's allegedly to have purchased a condom for herself and her partner in a building she heard the Housing Department financed, so that has to be checked. She promoted her partner several times outside L.A.'s civil service rules, and she's alleged to have spent $5 million on the Housing Department LAMS computer program only to throw it out and start over. So her record is pretty bad. Let's not confirm her, and let's think this over. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Walsh, and then we'll have Frank Romero.
Affirming everything the previous speaker spoke, said, okay, look, she doesn't even, she's so powerful, she doesn't even show up to ask for it. She got the interim job and the deputy mayor for housing in June. You don't even want to ask her any questions. You're the invisible woman. She worked for McCormick Baron, a developer. When she was here before, that was the height of the corruption scandal. Read the L.A. Times. Then the mayor fixed her up with a job with Obama as a deputy at H-U-D. She didn't last long there because there it's run on the up and up. And when she tried her corruption there, she got her ass bounced off the job.
Please watch your language, sir.
Why did Barack get rid of her? Why did Barack get rid of her? That's the question. Now she's over here and you want her to be, okay, and she's still under FBI investigation. HollywoodHighlands.org, 14 to 0.
Frank Romero. Frank Romero.
My name is Francisco Romero. I'm here to beg you to please, please not allow Mercedes Marquez as a permanent manager for record enforcement because she had caused so much damage. I still have three units that she closed, and I would like to subsidize it for poor people. And she sent so many people, so many landlords to lose their property by sending them to reap. And he's a very correct person. There's so many qualified people, honest people who would like, who could take the job, and it's our worst nightmare. So, Villagarosa, we were very surprised when he put her again with the bad record that she had, and then it's not a good option. She has a very bad record, is dishonest, corrupt, and you can look at her record when she was before, we were relieved, and now she's back again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jutta Romero, and then Richard Otterstrom.
Good morning, I'm Jutta Romero. I'm a landlord, and I'm really wondering if coming here and talking to the city council is doing any good because I see them eating, talking, reading. But anyway, what I want to say is that I'm vehemently opposed to Mercedes Marquez being again manager of the Housing Department. She was not a good manager, and it seems to me that you should be able to find lots of people who are very qualified to take that position and who are more neutral to landlords and tenants. So I hope that you will have the backbone to stand up to the mayor who brought her back and vote against her being the general manager again. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Rick Otterstrom. I am the, this year's president of the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. Before that, I was the legislative public policy chairman for the Greater Los Angeles Board of Realtors, and that was for the last 16 years. So I have memories of Ms. Marquez from the time she was appointed by Mayor Jim Hahn. During the first term she had, there was no effort made to bring tenants and owners together to solve problems. It was just a matter of all tenants were good, all landlords were bad, punish the landlords. She left L.A. for her own reasons, and during that time, tenants and owners have had opportunity to come together under the Housing Department's umbrella and resolve many differences that they had in different issues. And in several issues, we stand together and will be here together on future meetings on these issues that we are on the same side of. Now that she's back, interaction between the landlords and tenants has slowed down tremendously and is just basically on its way out. This is not good for tenants or landlords. It would be much better to have somebody else who is more evenly in their position so that we could go back to the way it was for the last two years. So I ask you, do not approve this motion.
Thank you, Rick. Bill Hui, Michael Millman, and Harold Greenberg.
Good morning, members of the L.A. City Council. President Wesson, my name is Bill Hui. I'm the president of Fair Housing Coalition. We're a civil rights organization for landlords. We believe in equality under the law for landlords and renters. Mercedes Marquez is bad news. I know, Mr. President, you called her a superstar one time. She's bad news for the city of L.A. Look, the city of L.A. right now is going in a strange direction, and we're raising the sales tax, we're gonna put a lot of trash haulers out of business. We're getting this really big anti-business image nationally. Now, where Mercedes Marquez is flawed, I only met her one time, so it's not a personal attack, I'm challenging her policies. Number one, does LHD spend about $1 million doing some research, and they found a lot of the things landlords complain about are true and valid. Once that research came out, she ignored it, shoved it in the drawer. She enforces policies that are anti-American. If you're one day late in registering your units, a 300% late fee. I mean, you couldn't do that in private industry, that's usually. She also does not cite tenants. If a tenant tears apart the inside of his or her apartment, if they rip out the smoke detector, even if they have a dirty kitchen and they don't clean it, the landlord gets cited, and you talk to the inspectors, and I go to a lot of inspections, and some of them trust me, and they talk to me off the record, and they go, "Listen, if we don't do what we're told, we have certain marching orders." And basically, it's screw the landlord, give the tenants a free pass unless they've killed somebody and there's a body on the floor. So these are her marching orders. I think she has an agenda that is unhealthy for L.A., and it's driving landlords out of business. And this morning, I drove past Robertson and Pico, which you would call West L.A. There was about 300 people standing outside of a food bank, and this was not ghetto people. People are becoming homeless in L.A. because landlords are leaving L.A. and affordable housing is disappearing because of Mercedes Marquez. Don't put her in. This is poison. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Is Harold here?
You know, Harold, for all the wrong reasons, is representing clients in court, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Millman.
But he gives his best regards. Michael Millman, I'm from Marvissa. Let me start at the beginning. I was over the top on Wednesday. I made some remarks on a matter that's very important to this community, dealing with trash, and I was brought to my attention that it's not appropriate to suggest to this fine group that there's some type of conspiracy afoot by others. And there's no good place for a person like me to be at this microphone and demonize somebody that's serving the best interests of her constituency. So I'm humbly saying I'm sorry I was out of line. With that be said, my son said, "Don't come up here and say that Mercedes Marquez is not qualified technically because our good friend Jim Hahn originally put her there, and my good friend Sarah Duchesne also likes her." So I can't say technically she's not qualified, but I can say when my friends try to become judges, I often fill out papers and say they're very smart, but they lack temperament. She got back here four months ago, but she never came forward and called Jim Clark and said, "Let's have a beverage or a cup of coffee and sit down and open up a new chapter." Not her. The first thing she did was she found a lady that was the most, a person who was a lobbyist in Sacramento for West Hollywood, for Santa Monica and Berkeley. You know what those policies were up there. You know what those policies were up there. They're very oppressive to owners, and she nominated Christina Minahan. I say, let's send it back to a committee, and let's find out what her background was in Washington, D.C. Why did she leave just before the Cecil Hotel litigation blew up? And let's find out whether or not she truly can lead the Housing Department, and she can cross those bridges. So, I think we're a little premature today to vote her up or down. I'd send it back to committee.
Thank you. Mr. Dude.
I don't know. He's been hassling me all over the room. I don't do anything wrong, anyway. This housing thing is totally, totally stupid. I mean landlords and tenants. We should not even have landlords and tenants anymore. Everybody should have a home, and we should get rid of all these attorneys litigating landlord and tenant relations. We should get rid of all these attorney litigating real estate, blah, blah, blah. We don't have to do it all at once, because, you know, a lot of people would be ruined by the change. But, we should start the ball rolling towards a society where we have no landlords and tenants. Everybody has a place, and nobody can lose it for any reason. Thank you. Read the book, The United World of Free and Clear. It's a fairy tale, but if it comes true, we will be better off.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, I think the mayor has a selection that he has vetted, and I just want to make sure the deputy mayor is here, that the candidate for this position, here's the comments, you can make them available. The mayor chooses who his administration is, that's part of the charter. But at the same time, there were words of encouragement that this department has been responsive over the last several months in listening to all parties and trying to solve the housing solution. And I know Mr. Rushmore Cervantes, I believe is still staying at that department. Do we know that, Mr. C.L.A.?
Mr. Rushmore, why don't you come forward?
Just to ask the question, because I think it's important. And the great thing about public comment is you can hear it, and then the other thing is, we should hear it, but at the same time, we should move forward. Mr. Cervantes, Rushmore, you're going to still be in a role at the Housing Department?
Yes, Rushmore Cervantes, executive officer with the Los Angeles Housing Department. Yes, I will remain as executive officer with the department.
Well, I think if you just continue the levels of communication that people have stated are so important, I would want to hear from anyone if that has changed. I know what kind of executive you are, and a variety of roles you've had in a variety of administrations, so to continue that. But I would support the mayor's recommendation, because the mayor picks his team. But statements that you've made, and Mr. Cervantes, for you to be here to continue the dialogue, to work to resolve problems is key in all the challenges we have. So, I thank you, and I thank you for the time, Mr. Wesson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, I rise to support Mercedes Marquez, and it is, and Mr. Rushmore, if you don't mind, just a few more minutes. I do know that throughout the years, before she went and supported our president and his administration, we had many challenges. I know my district, for example, has benefited from a very creative approach in developing housing scenarios and developments that have worked to address those in greatest need. But what I heard right now in public comment is a little disconcerting. What I would hope is that, if we can have a report back on perhaps some of the issues, maybe some of the hearings that perhaps went, that go through the process and have examples of how these hearings are conducted. What are the facts before them, and on what basis do they make their decisions in general? And that we allow for some response to the public comment. It's unfortunate she's not here today. I know she could not make it today, but I trust that the level of work that she has produced in the past for the city and the commitment she's demonstrated throughout her career here speaks for itself. But you have been interim director for how long?
Well, I was served as interim for the department for approximately six months prior to Ms. Marquez joining on as interim, and then now she'll serve as permanent. And I, when she came, I reverted back to the executive officer position.
And during those six months, you worked very hard, and I commend you for your sacrifice and your work, because I saw how many hours you're putting in. You're responsive to my office, and I would hope that the same dedication and energy we saw then will continue, I'm sure it will. But perhaps if we can just have, if you can help me, how will we report this back that we heard in council today in terms of responding to these assertions?
Certainly. Councilmen and members of the council, unfortunately, Mercedes is unable to be here today due to a scheduling conflict. She did want to be here today. But I, since I've been in the department for three years now, I think I can speak from experience and seeing the direction the department has come over the last three years, and also seeing what is going on in the housing industry as a whole, with the elimination of the community redevelopment agencies throughout the state of California, the reduction in home entitlements federally. There's a significant drop in resources to create affordable housing. Mercedes Marquez brings an incredible amount of leadership and experience from HUD and is crafting a new approach for the city to address affordable housing coupled with transit-oriented development, equitable transit housing. And with that, overlaying resources to demonstrate where we need to put our resources in a strategic manner. She's putting together a five-year plan as part of the consolidated plan that will lay out not only just housing, but overall resources for the city in the long term. So, while we're running the daily operations of the Housing Department and ensuring that we are providing equitable services to landlord, tenants, and developers, but also with a key vision on where we're going in the future. And that's what Ms. Marquez brings to the table as she leads the city and the region with this expertise and knowledge brought from Washington as we plan a course for the city for the next five years.
It's very clear we need a lot more work. I know my time is running out, I'm over now, but the truth is, there's so much more to do. Foreclosures are occurring at a very high rate. We are looking at a system that, quite frankly, between the banks, the financiers, the real estate industry, it's very hard to determine even who owns or controls these properties. And so, as we continue to address this cancer, these abandoned lots and structures, we need to continue working together to make sure that we address these very high priorities. So, I look forward to working with her. I would like to see some response to the accusations and assertions about how the mom-and-pop scale of property owners are being treated when they go to a hearing, and how that is being conducted. That's something I think would be of concern, have a report back that would help us shed some light on that, that would be very helpful.
Certainly, Councilman. I'll speak with Mercedes, and we will prepare a response back.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, this is a difficult issue for me, and I don't know Ms. Marquez well, but I had long heard that she was a divisive figure in her previous tenure with the city, and we're certainly continuing to hear that now. And our relationship with landlords and tenants seems to be at probably an all-time high. They've been working cooperatively together on issues, at least on the landlord side. I'm now hearing that they believe that that cooperation will be scuttled by this reappointment. Certainly, in terms of qualifications, you probably couldn't find anyone more qualified and with more appropriate experience. But I'd certainly at least look for the opportunity to have the council address her here today and to ask her about whether indeed she will continue to foster this kind of working relationship, or whether she will just side with tenants. And personally, I tend to lean on the tenant side anyway. I came from West Hollywood, where I helped to write one of the toughest rent controls in the country. But I would rather see us work cooperatively with landlords and tenants. There are now a lot of issues that they're working together on, and I fear that this will move us in the wrong direction. So, if we had the ability to continue this, to bring her before the council and have this discussion further, I would do that. I don't want to be in a position of having to vote against one of the mayor's appointments. I have supported him on all of his previous appointments since I've been here, but this one, I'm not quite ready to go on. So, I don't know. Mr. President, I don't know what our options are, but I wish we could have more dialogue and give ourselves some greater comfort before making this appointment.
Mr. City Attorney, if you could let us know how much, if any wiggle room we have, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, I've been wrong before, that if we don't act today, it becomes automatic?
Yes, Mr. President. Pursuant to Charter Section 508, today is the last day that council could act, and if council does not disapprove by today, then the nominee is deemed confirmed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I can't remember a time in the last 11 years we've had a general manager up for confirmation by this body that the general manager didn't show up and answer questions. So, I'm troubled by that. Listening to the allegations, I would wish that the general manager that's been nominated by the mayor would be here to answer the questions. Rushmore, I know you've served a lot of different positions in your time at the city of Los Angeles. You've been in many different capacities and different departments. You've done a great job. But I'm troubled by the fact that she's not here, the fact that we've got concerns from the apartment owners, the fact that the apartment owners are now working with the renters groups, which has not happened in the past history. There's always been that confrontation, which seems to have been resolved. I don't want to upset the apple cart, because the apple cart seems to be going in the right direction with the relationship with the apartment owners. And if you don't have apartment owners, you don't have apartments, you got to have a place for people to live. It's got to be a cooperative relationship. And the situation in the past was not very positive. The allegations that have been made, true or untrue, pose serious questions and reservations for me. I cannot support this, and I'm not going against the mayor's wish. What I'm saying is, she needs to be here to answer these questions. And if she's not here to answer the questions and to resolve these issues and to set up a dialogue, so we have both people on the same page, working for the people of Los Angeles, whether they're owners or renters, and it's just a situation in my mind that sets unsettled. So, Mr. Corretts, in his view of that, I share that same view, so I am not going to be supporting this. And you don't need to respond to it, but I'm not going to be supporting it today.
I understand. And if I may...
Yes, go right ahead.
And if I may, again, Mercedes did want to be here. It's an unfortunate scheduling issue, and she was not able to be here today. As it relates to the relationships between landlords and tenants, in this business, they're always going to be tenuous. They both have differing positions, and it's up to the department. And as Jim Clark from Agla mentioned in his public comments earlier, there has been dialogue from the landlords and tenants. There's been outreach efforts made through contractors to both landlords and tenants to ensure that we're communicating the rights to both parties. We need both sides to be successful. We need both sides to be able to have administrative options to address their concerns. Over the last three years, there's been that open dialogue. Mercedes Marquez has instructed myself, as well as the rest of the staff, to continue and further that dialogue, to ensure that we are hearing both sides, and both sides are actually have access to their rights and also get some sort of remedy as to resolve any issues they may have.
And if I could just say, that happened when she was not here, not when she was here. What you're stating is happened without her appearance, not with her appearance. That's the concern, that we destroy what's already been established and built under your leadership and other leadership. That's my concern. I don't want to destroy what's already been established. Thank you.
Mr. Englander.
Yeah, just a couple of things, and I too wanted to echo my disappointment with, I understand scheduling problems, but when you're here for a final job interview, or if you will, or an approval, I don't know how you mess up. How much is the total budget for the entire department?
I want to say approximately $65 million.
So, we've got a department at $65 million. That's everything. That's all grant funding, that's all in.
Special funds.
Special funds.
Salaries, related costs, everything.
Everything. And the pass-throughs as well? Housing pass-throughs?
Pass-throughs.
Monies that we get from the feds?
Oh, yes. We receive entitlements for home, housing opportunities for people with AIDS, emergency solutions grant.
There's a lot, with that, $65 million is a lot of money to have that, and a lot of legislative issues that deal with that. Some of the issues that have been brought up, I had a series of questions I wanted to ask her as well, both on the funding and on some of the legislative impacts, and hearing also some of the concerns that have been brought up in the past. But I just can't support voting for somebody that's not here, and it waited for the last minute to come here, so I'm not sure what happened there. But I'm too disappointed that, and it's not a matter of wanting to, I think Mr. Zine said, upset the apple cart is a good statement. I also like the idea of what Councilman Reyes said, and he brings so much wisdom to the table with his leadership on Plum. The ideas of studying all those efforts and bringing back some of those questions that should be looked at, if some of those items have been recorded or documented, we should start looking at that as well. So, I support that. I think that's the next direction we should start looking at. But in terms of the appointment right now, today, I'm just not there because she's not here. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Labange's points were well taken. The mayor's appointees are the mayor's appointees, and the mayor should be given great deference in making his appointments. At the same time, this council has an appropriate role in approving those appointments. And my concern is, I totally understand people have scheduling conflicts. I'm having more difficulty understanding why it is that on the very last day for council action, we're hearing this matter on a day when the general manager has a scheduling appointment. That, I think, subverts the council's appropriate role and the council's discretion. This appointment was, the report of the Ethics Commission on this appointment was in October, and I don't, I'm struggling to understand why it is that here we are in the last day for council action and considering this matter now, on the very last day, when if we don't disapprove her, she will be automatically approved, and she's not here. So, I don't know if anybody can speak to why it is that this is coming on the very last day for council action, but I would certainly feel a lot more comfortable, Mr. President, in continuing the matter until such time as we can actually pose some of the questions that members obviously have and serve our appropriate role as the body that is supposed to ask questions and assess and evaluate and either approve or disapprove the mayor's appointments.
Well, I guess we could do something along those lines, and even though it would be an approval, we could require her to come before this body and to answer every question or respond to every statement that was made earlier. So, I would ask the body, would they be comfortable in us continuing this until a time when we could have her presence? Mr. Labange.
I think I welcome that, but I said, why don't we ask her to go to committee first to vet a lot of questions, so when it comes to council, we could have more of a focus on that.
Okay, we could do that as well, and we'd probably get a better vetted. I understand. Mr. Corretts.
So, just to clarify, we're saying that we go through the process that we would ideally want to go through, but we would have already appointed her.
If we don't take action today, that's what will happen.
Well, I would say if this item passes, I would suggest that we do what you've suggested. But that doesn't give me enough comfort to personally be willing to vote for this appointment right now. So, I'd suggest, I'm assuming rightly or wrongly this will pass, and if it does, I think we should undertake that process in any case to clarify these issues.
Mr. Labange, you're back on the queue?
That was one of my knuckles that hit it by accident. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, as I understood what Mr. Labange... Well, I just wanted to clarify, as I understood what Mr. Labange was suggesting, it was not that we do this after voting to approve, it was that we move within the council to refer this matter to committee for consideration, not to vote on approval of her today. Was that what you were suggesting, Mr. Labange?
Yeah, I just think that way, ultimately, members, what it is, the mayor chooses his administration, that's his choice. But these are very important questions, Mr. Coretz, very important questions, but in front of a committee, it could hone in on some of these issues. There was great public comment, let's see what's there, and then come back to us with a different report and an update and ask that the general manager, maybe we could draft a motion, Mr. Jerry Miller from the CLA, would report to us at some date in January or whenever the case may be. Because the charter is such that it allows this person to be appointed no matter, unless we vote against it. So I would just say, I understand that, we all had a chance to speak. I think the best route would be to send it back to committee right now, and I move to go back to committee and instruct the committee chair to discuss these issues that were eloquently spoke of, and at some time in the future, request the general manager to come here and have a frank discussion, like we have on whether it's the budget, whether it's recreation, whether it's infrastructure, focus on housing. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon.
Unless we have eight votes to oppose this nominee, she's going to be put in the position. So I think anything that doesn't recognize that would be disingenuous. So I think we should vote up or down or continue the matter. Either way, what we should do is ask the chairman of the committee to take up these issues that have been raised, should she end up being appointed. And I'm sure that at that point, the general manager would be happy to address those concerns in a public hearing. But to say that, to take up this matter would be disingenuous, because this matter would be fait accompli. I mean, so I don't think we should do it in that way. Either that or just continue the matter and allow the appointment to occur, and then I would move that we direct the chairman of the ACD committee to conduct a hearing with the general manager, asking for her response to all the issues that have been raised.
Thank you. Congressman Englander.
With all due respect, this isn't about Mercedes, this isn't about any individual. It's about the integrity of the process. That's all really this is about. And the simple fact of referring it back is simply meaning we're just not going to take a position. And then we could just change the charter process if the mayor's going to appoint somebody, and there's, I think, 99.9% of the time that we go along with that, because they've done their vetting, and it's typically people we've worked with. That's not the issue. There's a reason it comes to this body, and there's a reason it's time certain, and we respect the integrity of that process or we don't. It's really, that's what it boils down to, not the person itself at all. The fact that, as a matter of, there are questions that numerous council members and the community and stakeholders have that can't be asked and answered and should be at this time in the process. And so therefore, I think we should take the vote or ask the mayor to rescind the appointment and then bring her back. Bring her right back to the process and actually do it transparently in public with her coming here as well to address this body and the committee, as we can follow that process, as we should, because we've got to protect this institution and the integrity and the transparency of this institution as well. And that's what we have a fiduciary responsibility to do, that's what we were elected to do. And so it's not about the individual, and I think we've explained it well, and that there is ample time to send this back correctly and say, we're not going to vote, we're going to vote on this today, and for those who are going to vote no, say it's only about following the correct process, and then allowing him to bring, and it's so really, it's a courtesy disapproval. It's not anything but that, and nobody should deem it anything short of that, and go through then the correct process, which is why we have the process, or simply look at the fact that maybe we just shouldn't even have the process. But I think there should be a respect of that integrity, and we should uphold that. Thank you.
Congressman Zine.
For the City Attorney, there's been a lot of dialogue on this matter. Today's the last day. We reject it, it's denied, the mayor could go back and reappoint.
That is my understanding.
We accept it, then it takes position, and whatever happens down the road, that discussion takes place, but that person would be in that position.
I'm not falling in that last...
If this body, this council, does not deny this position, then it's going to be approved since this is the last day.
Correct.
Sending it to committee, doing everything else, anything else, it doesn't really matter because the position will be effective, because there was not a negative vote.
Correct.
Okay, so what the charter clearly mandates is the mayor appoints, the council confirms or denies, seldom does the council deny, and in this particular case, all the discussion is if we vote no, it's no, the mayor could consider it again and reappoint, or if it passes, then whatever happens after that, she will still be the general manager of that department.
If either she affirmatively is approved, or if council fails to disapprove, then she will be deemed approved.
Right.
If council votes to disapprove her, then...
Then the mayor could, the mayor could then reconsider and bring her up again.
I believe so.
Well, he has that discretion as the mayor to make those appointments, and then it would go through the process, the venting process again. Just wanted to make sure we're following...
That is my understanding.
Following the charter position on it. Okay.
Okay, you know what? No, Mr. Labange, I think we just vote on this. We'll vote up or down. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Mr. Clerk, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Now?
I have a question.
Mr. Reyes.
For clarity, there were, does this include the amendments? There were some amendments, there was...
I think those are just report backs that really shouldn't be grouped into this vote. This is really an up or down vote on the nominee.
Okay, I want to make clear, because there was discussion, us getting follow-up and making sure we needed to clarify some issues, so would that be a separate motion?
That should either be framed as just a report back to the department, which does not have to be framed as a motion, or you could do a separate motion.
Mr. Englander.
Call before the vote, please.
Okay, let's, Madam Clerk, we're going to do a roll call. Call a roll.
Alarcon, Buscagno, Cardenas, Englander.
Yeah, here. No, it's a no.
Garcetti.
Hi.
Weezer.
Here. No, yes, yes.
Coretz.
No.
Krikorian.
No.
Labange.
I vote for the mayor's appointment.
Mr., go on.
There was language out here that's unacceptable. Would you make sure we respect the public comment?
Okay, okay, Mr. Labange. All right, next.
Parks.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Zine.
No.
Wesson.
Yes.
Eight yes, four no. That is adopted. It's approved.
What other businesses, oh...
Reports back to this council and comes in, and now, we lost the chance, members. I had a chance to get her back here. I think we should get her back here, so, second by Mr. Krikorian.
So that's all right.
Yeah.
For six months, the general manager.
So what do we, Mr. City Attorney, what do we need to do where it relates to his motion? Can he just make it verbal?
I'll make a written motion Tuesday, that a contested...
Okay, now let's move to general public comment. Danielle Jones, John Walsh. Run the clock, Madam Clerk, when they're at the podium.
What is this, run the clock? You said, run the clock on you. Thank you, Arnold Sachs. A fascinating week, culminated with today's discussion. You know, Tuesday, when you had the items on the agenda regarding fee increases and taxes, there might have been 20 people in the John Ferraro chambers, might have been 20, half-cent sales tax. Nobody from the real estate agencies showed up, because that was all handled behind the scenes. The property assessment, wasn't very many property owners here. And I mentioned one of the sergeant arms, when they want to get something done, they pick up the phones. And what happened on Wednesday? The place was packed, packed with supporters for trash. You would think that those same people would have been here for a half-cent sales tax, some concerned citizen, maybe even some neighborhood council members. But I guess it's all in the language. I look up here on the board, deferred item number four, which means it wasn't considered, is on today's agenda. So the discussion that we just had about ethics and propriety and being open, why didn't you just continue the item on the appointment for the general manager for the housing authority? Then the time isn't running. The 45 days isn't running. There's nothing in today's agenda saying that this is the last day for the council to take action. Plenty of items have shown up on the agendas stating a date for council to take action on that item, otherwise it's sent back to committee. The same thing is said here, only if the council doesn't act, then the 45-day time limit takes place. So if you had put it over for another meeting, that's not acting, or maybe it is. Take it from the council.
My name is Daniel Jones, the city of Los Angeles. Every person in the city just got played by these 12 people. You couldn't do the right thing right in front of us, could you? The best person in this room is sitting, standing right here, he was just standing there. It could have been her, I don't care, cousin it. You're standing there extruding demands or persons qualifications, and you're not even going to consider it. Okay, that's that one. These bars right here don't represent anything that that man sits over there. Depend the Constitution for all domestic threat. Mr. Garcetti, you're an officer, you haven't objected to that rendition law, in public anyways? I understand how you feel about it. This country's going to answer this question, and we're going to answer a lot more. And I'm going to do this, where's bus chop? Hello, sir, this is my commando casual. I want you to call the Department of Justice right now. For those seven years, I put computer networks in parks, hospitals, schools, listen up, everybody. I put computer networks in for 12 county courthouses. Why's my microphone not working? Turn it on. I'm going to expose the brand-new whistleblower law for the United States federal government right now. I know exactly how those judges getting in and out of the building every single day. I use those tunnels when I put their computer networks in 15, 20, 30 years ago. You're all going to start caring about your civilian judges in this country, because martial law eliminates them. And I'm going to make sure the judges in this country, the civil ones, don't give it all away. I'm going to make them think twice about coming to the job in the first place.
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go for nude pictures of the mayor's girlfriend. Okay, do not sign the Riordan petition that cripples the pension for city workers. Now, there is going to be a debate between Detective Eisen of the LAPD and Richard Riordan. We understand that the LA Times has assigned Martha Groves to do the story. We don't think she should be there, and why? Because she committed adultery with Mr. Riordan. Go and Google adultery, John Walsh, Richard Riordan, and Martha Groves of the LA Times. She should not be doing it. She should not be involved. Kate Del Castillo, everybody's saying, John, you have absolutely no proof linking Kate Del Castillo to the mayor. Google Kate Del Castillo and the mayor, and out comes all of their public appearances. And the LA Times says that it's his private life. In other words, the mayor's public life is his private life. That's the position. Vote against the Weezer trolley. This is only some of you. The Weezer trolley, you know, a desire called streetcar. We do not need a streetcar. One million hours of bus service have already been eliminated. We're asking everybody, if you want to see pictures of Kate Del Castillo, go to our website. And also, Garcetti has the nerve at the debate to tell the Korean community, I'm going to put a cap on nightlife for Koreatown, and they all applaud, and they'll give you money. I just want you to know for the record, we've been asking for a cap on nightlife for the past 10 years in Hollywood, and all we have is now nine new bars.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Let me have Mr. Dude, Mr. Murphy, and Mr. Dowd.
Now, everybody has to wait, because he keeps sending me to the back of the room. You know, the hat is a big issue, but you know what the hat represents? Housing for everyone, you idiots. You know, that's what it represents. Why do we have this stupid going back and forth, landlords and tenants, all this crazy stuff, just because human beings need a place to live? Are we stupid? The birds have a place to live? The wolves, the bears, the lions, oh my, they all have a place to live. Are we the stupidest animal on earth, or are we the smartest animal on earth? Are we the greediest animal on earth? Yes, we are, because all we talk about is money, and we don't give a heck about who gets trampled in the machinery. And you talk about billions of dollars being spent on bullet trains and going out to space and charting space so we can tax everybody all over again, and not allow anybody to live through a life that is comfortable. Why are we putting each other down to the bottom of the dump every time? Why are we not allowing each other to have a system where everybody has housing, and if you rise to the top, you can go build a castle? Read my book and understand it. All I'm asking for is a change in the way we think. We do not need to be stupid all our lives. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy.
Let me just say, I am not very happy with the president election came out. I voted for McGraw-Hmi. He could have had, he could have won more states. I didn't like the outcome of the election. I hope the mayor election's a little better.
Mr. Dowd.
All right, first of all, Channel 35, get a pan, the whole side of the room's empty, this whole side of the horseshoe, nobody's here anymore, there's no council members in the room. First of all, no, second of all, that's a number two. Number two, all right, yes, the elections are over, but I walked into the room, I really thought something was going to happen, I thought you turned the corner. Mercedes Marquez is the worst. All I remember is reading on the blogs of all the bad things, and the fact that there's friction here, that's the sign that... and the fact that there's, that there's friction here, that's the sign that there is problems with that. You should have just voted no, grown some balls, and just gone against the mayor, not like this ad hoc president, I called a suckup, tried to have me removed from the room, that's feared language, but it is a disruption, but it is like, oh, I want to go along with the mayor, like, forget the mayor, you're the city council, you're meant to be running the city, but you haven't, you're letting all the attorneys and all the men, they're, they're all superseding you, and, and running off with the city, and then the budget. Paul Krikorian's going to have a bunch of problems trying to find the billion dollars that they need just from my lawsuit, that they're, that it's going to summary judgment next week, but that's why I'm not here anymore, because I said everything I had to say, we, we proved all the things, we got kicked out for all the wrong things, it's all on the record. So I want to do my shout-outs too to Linda Brady, Brandon Brady, and Missy, they're out there, out in America somewhere, watching the voting, the elections. I'm having a lot of fun now, because everything's done, I'm all much more relaxed, I don't have to do any of those things that you thought were so bad. No one needed a Band-Aid. Did you need a Band-Aid, Tom Labonge, for anything I said? You're a football guy, you know, I really thought you were heading for an interception touchdown with that Mercedes-Marcas thing, but no, you just fumbled.
George Azarian, come on up, George, and this is Perry, counsel, is that correct?
Yes, me too.
Run the clock.
Hello, everybody, 15 councilmen, I wanted to work with 15 councilmen, because 46 years I give food to low-income people under my pocket, money I pay under my pocket is different, very hard until today. I wanted now make my foundation, nonprofit organization, make it be, uh, section eight, section eight. Already I find out old building for 30-unit income, $22,000 every month. That's what I want to buy, my foundation, for low-income people, I'm going to give that, uh, low-income people and the supply, everything, from food, clothes, furniture, even bill, I, my foundation is going to pay bill, and the gas too. I want to support a little bit, me, get up, that's it. And then, little thing, I need room for food, now I know a place, street, the street too hard, and the two closets, free way, got a room, ladder room, city no, no using, never can use it, no lights, no gas, no water, no nothing, but my foundation can use it, and the 12 people going to work, new job. I want to that, that little thing, please give up, help that question.
William Scott Gar Wright, is William Scott Gar Wright still here?
Yes.
Please, thank you very much, with note your name, next speaker would be La Perry, counsel, WGTF.
May I ask you a question?
You can, if the ropes, go to the ropes, ask the sergeant, we'll ask you then. No, La Perry, and the last speaker comment today, Fritz Clodit Bovell. Fritz?
Followed this, it will close, public comment.
My name is Fitz Claudio Bovell, um, I came here tonight to actually express my respect for Mr. Herb Wesson, but my point tonight is for Mr. Wesson's staff on Western. I came here and I spoke August 30th in regards to a concern of capital improvement in regards to Jones and Jones apartment complex. I'm very disappointed with the staff on Western because they had lied to me, and they have disappointed me, and they have lied to the community. I was asked to produce documentation on both issues, capital improvement and so forth, and no one has even called me and expressed to me, or actually, they promised to meet with me so we can meet with myself and the community, so we can sit down and try to resolve this problem. And this is an ongoing situation, so my point is this, I know Mr. Wesson, we met at Jack Robinson Stadium, and I have to say to Mr. Wesson that your staff at Western, uh, the Western location, they have lied to the community, and they have lied to me, and they promised me a meeting with the community to discuss this capital improvement situation, and I have to say, Albert Lord and Commanding Black, you have lied to me and lied to the community, and that is not fair for Mr. Herb Wesson's. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, no other public comment cards, what is next, Madam Clerk?
Counsel has motions for post and no referral.
So ordered. Any announcements, members? Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce that we are in my office, we're again conducting our holiday food drive to stamp out hunger, this is our third annual food drive. Anybody who would like to help less fortunate families throughout the San Fernando Valley can drop off a non-perishable food item, canned good or boxed foods at my North Hollywood office at the corner of Victory and Laurel Canyon, Suite 201. For more information, anyone can call 818-755-7676, and we're accepting donations through next Wednesday.
And if they call that number, one of your staff members run downstairs and pick it up curbside, that's a good idea.
That's absolutely right, that would be Mr. Jeff Yazetta.
All right, very good, Mr. Krikorian, thank you. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and on Sunday, November 18th, at 3:00 p.m., we have the 22nd Annual Mariachi Festival on the corner of First and Boyle in Boyle Heights. We invite everyone who come out, who enjoy some good music, it's a 22nd annual, we have great mariachis playing, and a lot of great food as well, and I'm going to take my daughter there, it's her birthday on Saturday, happy birthday, Amelia, and she is turning 11 years old. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Tomorrow's United Way Homewalk, 2012, a great event, starting at Exposition Park. And also, Mr. Wesson, if you allow me, speaking from the John Farrowo chambers where John Farrowo stood, go Trojans, as John would want to say, but Mr. Reyes, I'll give you a moment to say something good.
Go Bruins.
Very good.
It's going to be a good upset, hopefully not.
It'll be a great day for all of Southern California, yes. Adjourning motions, all please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Wesson. Thank you, Mr. President and members. I rise to request that we adjourn in the memory of the father of our dear friend Brian Darcy, his dad's name was Edward. As I was celebrating my 39th birthday for I don't know how many years, that's when he passed away on November 11. He was a World War II veteran, and he served under General George Patton in the Armored Division. He was a recipient of the Purple Heart, two Bronze Stars, five Battle Stars, American Defense Service Medal, Distinguished Unit Badge, European Middle Eastern Service Medal. He was the past president of the New York chapter of the Fourth Armored Division, life member of DAV, and MOPH. He retired from the post office in New York after 35 years as a claims adjuster. He is survived by his sons, Brian, Robert, and Williams, and daughters, Jean and Christine, 10 grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. He was preceded in death by his wife, Elizabeth, he was married to her for 61 years. Burial services will be at Arlington National Cemetery in Washington, DC. With that, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Brian's dad. Very well, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Garcetti.
And thank you, Mr. Wesson, our thoughts are with Mr. Darcy and his family. I'd like to adjourn today in memory of Andres Ordóñez, who, you may, it may sound familiar, the 25-year-old church deacon who was shot to death after interrupting a woman who was vandalizing the wall of the Iglesia Principe de Paz, a small evangelical church on Beverly Boulevard in my district. He came to the United States from Guatemala as a young boy, and this was home. He'd worked long hours as a cook in a local restaurant, attended this church since he was 10, and he married the granddaughter of the pastor. He was a hard-working man who loved to spend time with his family. He left this earth way too soon, but will live on forever in the hearts of his family and his friends. He lives, he leaves behind his wife, Anna, and a one-year-old son, and a child to be born in five months.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I wish to adjourn, if we could all adjourn, in memory of a local Boyle Heights community leader, Ofelia Gonzalez. Ofelia was a co-founder of Unión de Vecinos, a local activist group that works to improve the community. She was born March 22nd, 1945, and passed away in November 6th, 2012. With Unión de Vecinos, she played an active role during the immigration rights movement in the 1980s. She would bring along her four children to Dolores Mission to prepare hot meals for the Guadalupe Homeless Men's Project as well in the early phases of the program. She is considered by her family and closest colleagues as a determined and fearless advocate in Boyle Heights. She leaves behind her mother, Juliana Gonzalez, and her four children, Sandra Gonzalez, Gonzalo Gonzalez, Jasmine Gonzalez, and Raul Gonzalez, who is a good friend of mine and a talented artist that works with local youth to preserve and restore art in their community. She will be greatly missed by her family and friends. And colleagues, I also wish to adjourn in memory of a well-known and distinguished mariachi musician, Rafael Gonzalez, who also happens to be the brother of Ofelia Gonzalez we just adjourned in memory of as well. Rafael was born October 29th, 1943, and passed away on November 4th, 2012, two days before Ofelia's passing. He began playing mariachi music in 1966 in Tijuana, Los Flamingos. He played in a mariachi zopapan with his brother Alejandro Gonzalez for five years, then was recruited to Mariachi de Los Angeles with leader Jorge Quintero. He played with many well-known and famous musicians, including José Alfredo Jiménez, one of the biggest artists in Mexico, Celia Cruz, Lucha Villa, Silvia Pinal, Enrique Guzmán, and Capolina. Rafael will be greatly missed by his family and friends and mariachi musicians everywhere. He leaves behind his mother, Juliana, three children, and four grandchildren. May he also rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Garcetti.
I just wanted to, one, postscript to Mr. Ordóñez's adjourned motion. While we've made an arrest in the case, the police do not believe this was the shooter who was made in the arrest, and so that $50,000 award is still out there, and we're calling on the community to continue to look for the killer of Andres Ordóñez, though they've made progress in the case and have a person of interest under arrest right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Members, I ask for you adjourned, a member of a man that lived 91 great years, an artist that, known throughout the world, William Turnbull. He was very much involved with our very own Brit Week here last year in Los Angeles area, and his work was highlighted in the, over the past 60 years. Truly a wonderful man who's going to be missed by many. I ask for you adjourned in memory of William Turnbull. Seeing that there's no other business before us, have a good weekend, and thank you, especially our clerks. Have a good weekend. Kenny, thank you for the good sound.